Good afternoon, everyone. We call this meeting to order our work session on April 8th at 3:04 PM. Councilman Stokely, leave us an invocation?
Yep.
Everybody please stand if you're able. All right. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us here together today. Please guide our words and our hearts as we make decisions and have conversations that will guide the future of Odessa. Make sure that our intentions are pure and we do things for the betterment of the city. We ask these things in your name. Amen?
Amen.
All right. Let's go to Agenda Item Number Three. We're going to discuss renaming a portion of Murphy Street to MLK Street. I'm going to call on Councilman Mitchell.
Good afternoon. First of all, I appreciate all of y'all that showed up for this, all right? Shows that we have community support on District One, the South Side. I really think Odessa needs an MLK somewhere. And we didn't, I didn't want to rename the whole Murphy Street going west, but we want to go from Grant East all the way around to I-20, which runs right back by Woodson Park and still head east. I think it'd be great if we could accomplish this. I feel like we have the members up here with me that we can achieve this. This is one of the things I think our city council brings, is us being together. So, I brought the idea up, couple of us agreed with it, so this is what we're trying to do. And I really, really appreciate you guys showing up to support that we get this done. Now, this is just a meeting. This doesn't say we gonna get it, but it lets the rest of the board and everyone else in here know that, hey, this, we want this idea. We want this done. We need it. We want it done. Most major cities have a MLK, and I want to beat Midland getting one. All right? City of Odessa need to beat Midland doing something. So, that's my take on it, and man, it means a lot to see you guys here. It really means a lot to show the support. I had a lady yesterday, the other day, we picked up trash again there, and she said she was so proud, she's in here now. She was so proud to see the city councilman from District One over there picking trash up by Hayes Elementary because nobody else ever showed up for her. But that's what I'm saying, we're a different group now. So, just bear with us, we gonna get some things done, and this is one of the things I want done, okay? Thanks for your support.
Thanks, Eddie. I'm going to ask a couple of questions, and I'm going to have some of you guys stand that's supporting it. I want to start with Norma. I understand we sent a letter out to business owners on Murphy Street. Just ask if anyone had a concern or are they in favor of it? Do we get responses back from that?
Yes, so the notices went out two weeks ago to all the residents and businesses that were along that portion of Murphy Street. Only one letter was returned for not being able to find, that person was not at that address, but there was no responses neither way.
Okay. Then I'm going to do something, I don't know if I can even do it, because I don't really think about being a mayor, but if you're for this particular Agenda Item, that is, you're for renaming Murphy Street to MLK Street, would you please stand? All right, I'm going to try. All right, stay standing, stay standing. I'm going to quick count. I can't count that high. All right. I appreciate that, and I'm going to give both sides a fair shake. Everybody sit down. Is there anybody against it? Please stand. Judge, sit down, I'm back there. If you're in the back row, you're standing, it's okay. I want to ask now, it gives a chance for council to ask some questions, so does anyone have any questions?
One of those answered.
Before you speak, councilman, I want to say we already have a budget for it.
Correct.
And actually, the mayor can pay for this side as possible. That's how low it is.
And Mayor, if you want to talk to Joseph Goff, he's here.
Yeah.
Come on up, Joe.
Come on up, Joe, I didn't even see you back there.
He's got it all laid out.
Councilman Vasquez is very concerned about the cost, but now he is all happy. So, Joe, give us an estimate, or give us an explanation, what are we looking at in terms of renaming the street?
Well, this is approximately, oops, street name sign, why is it 32-count?
Move that microphone right in front of you, because I can't hear anything.
We're going to have to replace 32 street name signs.
Maybe not on, is there a button push?
Nope.
Oh, there we go, we got power now. Thank you, sir.
Approximately 32 street name signs will need to be replaced. The sheet of material, what we'll do in house, we're looking at approximately $1,500.
So, let me ask you this, Dan.
That's just supplies and materials.
Thank you. Don't move muscle yet. Dan, is there any, we need a motion? I mean, do we need to bring this to full council and have a motion on it?
What we need to do is, so what we need to do is, we can put it on for two weeks from now, and we can put, consider changing the name, the MLK, and in the meantime, you can probably give a consensus for Joseph to go and start doing his work, because I feel like it will pass two weeks from now.
I feel strongly about that.
So, but you can do a consensus, say, okay, Joseph, start working on this, doing what you got to, so that whenever two weeks comes from now, you're, he's already ahead of the curve and it's a done deal.
All right. We missed this year, obviously, we missed 2025, but I'd like for 2026 for us to have something to celebrate, the name change. So, you have mayor's authorization to begin work on this. I want to ask you guys one request. Would you please show back up on, it's going to be April 22nd?
Twenty-second, two weeks from today, at 6:00 PM.
Just because I want to see your support, I want the community to see your support. We need to make it a formal motion, I can't have to go through the formal steps, but I think you can already tell that this, everyone present here, it's going to be unanimous. And out here, it's unanimous. So, it tells me the entire community is supporting this objective, and we're proud to do it. We're proud of Eddie for bringing it up to our attention, that we didn't even have a street. So, want to thank everyone that came today. I know, feel like you didn't speak, but I heard you loud and clear. So, thank you for being here, thank you for what you do to the city, for being a part of it. I've challenged every group I've spoke to the last six months, get engaged, be part of this city, show up for these meetings, let us know what you think. We want to hear from you. We want to do what you want to do, but we've got to know what it is, right? And so, talk to your individual councilmen, Councilman Stoker's at large, Councilman Eddie's District One, you know, all the districts, because they're out there, I'll probably get them wrong if I say them. So, I'm just going to say, look right down there at all those names, and if they're in your district, reach out and say, hey, I'd like to see this happen. And if we can, if it's something the community supports, we're going to try to do it. So, you have your marching instructions? Norma, if you'll put it on the agenda for the 22nd?
And Mayor, what also can happen, he can be ready, and then once it's voted on two weeks from now, then a week or two, or a couple of weeks after that, whatever time he needs, you can do a street dedication with everybody will be able to come and celebrate.
Perfect. If you don't mind, make me an extra one, I want to give it to Eddie, if we have him make an extra sign.
That would be good.
Make me one extra.
Yeah, why don't you bring a mock-up on the next meeting? Can you do that?
Yes, sir.
We'll let him have a mock-up.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, everyone, very much. Thank you, Joe, we appreciate it.
Yeah, I want to say that you can stay, but that's probably about it for right now.
We want everybody to stay, but if you have to go to work or do something, we understand. Don't worry. You need to get up, get up and leave.
Thanks for coming.
Whoa, don't leave yet, don't leave yet. I want to talk about one thing, I want all y'all to hear, since you're all sitting here. We're going to discuss trash. Trash is my pet peeve. I hate trash. Trash is wearing me out. We're going to do our best up here, we have done our best to get all the trash trucks fixed, to get fully engaged in our employees, we have everyone who can drive these trash trucks. It's not enough, guys. You didn't throw it down, I'm not blaming anyone in this room, but we all got to do our part to fix it. So, I'm not exactly sure who's supposed to take the lead on this, it says council, but I'll take the lead. It's community pride. If you don't love this city, leave it. I'm not making you stay here, I love this town. But do me a favor, drive somewhere after you leave this meeting, by Park or by, I drive every day down one, Highway 80, Business Loop 20 now, drive Fodry, just look at every drill site, every vacant lot, and it's embarrassing. It's dirty. I call it Odessa Flag. It's a plastic bag caught in a mesquite tree, and it blows, and it's everywhere. Everyone on this dais has been out picking up trash at least once this year or more. We have Keep Odessa Beautiful historically did a fall and a spring cleanup. We're going to ask her to do it once a month. I've got groups like the Downtown Lions Club of Odessa that has picked, I think, two weeks ago, and they sent me photographs. I picked on HEB for having the loop at West Loop 338, University looked terrible. They went out and cleaned it up, I got pictures of it, it is clean now. I've got their Odessa Rotary Club working. I've got a group called Keep a Clean Odessa, well, I hate to even tell what it's called. There's so many different groups. Team Court is working every quarter, but I'm asking neighbors, churches, schools, businesses to get involved. Renee Earle's at their Odessa Chamber of Commerce is going to have a date on June 5th, it's Thursday. Why is that important? Because we're asking every business to send a crew to pick up trash, because then weekends, people in Odessa sometimes go fishing, or they take their kids to play in tournaments, but on Thursday, at work, I'm asking every employer to send crews out to help clean up this town. This is a theme that we're going to pursue until I quit seeing trash bags hanging on every dirt lot in Odessa. And you can pick on Grandview, I can pick on South Odessa, I can pick on East Odessa, North Odessa, West Odessa. It doesn't really matter. They all need our help. And again, I'm going to, I'm even going to one step further. I'm going to look at Chief Gurkey and say, if it's a crime to throw trash out on the road, I want officers writing tickets. Don't throw a bag of water in a plastic bag in the back of your truck and think you're good, because that bag flies out all the time. I'm tired of it. If a policeman sees that, I think they should write a ticket for it. I'm going to ask our judges, when you give community service time, make it be trash pickup. Make people go pick up trash. It not necessarily is a punishment, why, it's community service. That's what it is, to service our community, pick up trash. I'm going to ask Sheriff Griffiths and County Judge, get some of the prisoners at the LEC and get them working the highways. I don't want to hear, we don't have enough staff, find the staff. Where's County Joe? Oh, there he is. Judge Fawcett, find it in your budget to hire someone. If we don't have enough law enforcement personnel to, how do you use the word watch? I'm not even sure what the right word is, to take the inmates, prisoners, whatever the proper word is, what's the word? Supervise them, just like, we're going to start on Second Street, and we're going to walk till it gets dark. Tomorrow, we'll keep walking, and then we're going the other direction tomorrow. And so, I'm asking the entire community, from the county, the city, school boards, OC, UTPB, every business, every church, every neighborhood, if you live there, clean it up. I walk the dogs almost every night, and I thought, I live in a pretty clean neighborhood, instead, I really started paying attention. I mean, guys, and I don't know if it's kids, I don't know who it is, but they like drinking water and throwing the water bottle out. They particularly like drinking Gatorade and throwing the Gatorade bottle out, I know. The little bitty things of whiskey and drinks, they throw those out. Really? You can't find a trash can. Every problem in Odessa, we got to throw shit on the ground. It just wears me out. It's just frustrating. It's frustrating to me that we have let our city get to a point where we have to talk about it all the time. We actually are trying to do something as a community. You can ask Aaron, he went and sent some guys, there's a machine called a trash gobbler. We looked at it, unfortunately, I think the answer is, it's probably not what we need.
Probably not the best for what we need, but what you spoke about is exactly what we're talking about. This is a grassroots effort about community pride and putting boots on the ground and picking up trash. There are some other things that we could do, obviously, that we've looked at.
Let's hear them. What can we do, Aaron?
Well, dumpsters, I think, are a major problem in this city. I know dumpsters are awfully convenient, but when you go pick up one of these lots, like I think all of us have done, you notice a lot of this trash has blown out of dumpsters over the years, and it doesn't just biodegrade, it's there for a long, long time. So, the movement over to the trash cart, I think, will help a lot. In addition to that, there are, well, there are ordinances in place right now against overgrown lots. Is that something that code enforcement could look at?
Code enforcement?
You know, these, these, these.
Those guys in here?
She said, "Ridin' Red."
Speaking of code enforcement, I wonder if there's a code against people throwing out trash, or having their lots be really trashy? It seems like it ought to be a code against that.
There actually is.
But there's, I mean, there's codes against the broken signs they're blowing everywhere, parking in your front yard. I mean...
I don't want to be like the...
Do you want numbers?
I love numbers, talk to us.
Okay, so, as of January 1st...
Hold up microphone up to you.
Oh, there, okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, we have given a total of 4,621 notices of violations. We have had campaigns, we had a campaign at the Lawndale area, and people were complaining about the property values depreciating. We had a campaign, we went out there, we did a sweep. People were very upset because we were, and you received a phone call, Mayor, because we were giving out notices of violation. The other thing we did is we did an educational sweep, where we went to every door and we told them what city ordinances were active, which ones we enforced. People got upset about that as well. My officers, some of them were called names, among other things, were asked not to be putting stuff on their doors, we're just trying to educate people. And signs that are up and down the streets, advertising, we average maybe 50 a day that our officers pick up on a daily, including Saturdays. Every morning, that's the first thing they do, is pick up these signs that are on the right of way. We've reached out to, because those end up trash, those end up blowing away in somebody's yard or the street, and so, we've done that. And so, we have put a lot of effort, know, I want everybody to know that there's a population about 120. I have 14 officers, two field supervisors, and one manager, and they have all issued over almost 5,000 notice of violations since January the 1st. Last year, they issued over 18,000. The other thing that we're doing now is, we are trying to, with the help of our judges, we are trying to get warrants so we can get on the property to clean it up. If you think about it, we're actually doing that a person a favor, because we are cleaning it up for them so they can go ahead and get them dirty again, and then we go through this thing. We are filing liens on those properties, but people don't seem to care. So, this is where we're at, and this is a constant battle every day. So, that's what we do. Every morning, they pick up signs, garage sale signs, advertising signs, they give notices. The street department has been wonderful. Jesse, I don't know if Jesse's here, he has been wonderful too. We just communicate very well, and we just try to do the best that we can.
So, what can we do to help you?
I got a first one on signs. So, I've been asking for at least a month, PD signs are down all over town, and the sheriffs sign are down all over town, broken. Could we have those cleaned up?
Actually, where's Joseph? Thank you, Joseph. He, there was a complaint about one of them, and he went and picked one from OPD that was on Second and Grant, yes. So, yes, we are addressing all of them. We just need hands, people, but we are trying very hard.
We respect that. This is not a criticism of you by any stretch of the imagination, it's just a, it's a, I guess it's a observation that we're not doing a good job as people, as a city. I mean, I mean, just, I did it before, I asked for y'all to stand, just show me a hands. Does everyone think we're a clean, nice city? Raise your hand. If everyone thinks we're doing a fantastic job as a city, as a people, raise your right hand. Let the record reflect, not a single person raised their hand. Let's change the question. Does everyone agree we should do better? We somehow have to, as citizens, have to do better to clean up our town so our kids, our parents appreciate it? Let the record reflect, it's almost unanimous. I don't know what to do in terms of the people that you're dealing with, citizens, obviously, that don't seem to care, so I don't know if we need a better campaign, how important it is, because everybody in this room thinks it's pretty important. I don't know, I guess I'm looking to the city for some advice, solutions, recommendations, so we can tell people, we're going to, if you don't keep your lots clean, you don't keep your...
That's another initiative that we have. Right now, we're in the process of drill sites, vacant lots. That's another thing that we're working on separating and sending letters to the private owners of drill sites. And what we're going to do is, we're just going to spend our money and get on, do as much as we can. Those that have fences, of course, we're limited because those are logged, but we are going to be taking inventory of those, and it's quite a few. And again, the street department is really good at that, but because of the condition of so many, we're trying to inventory those, and we're going to go ahead and get a private company to go ahead and start cleaning those. We have to.
Agreed. Another question, on the notice of violation, is there performance? Do they have to show up anywhere?
They have seven days to clean it up. A lot of people are very receptive, they'll call and say, hey, I work, I have the weekend off, can I go ahead and just have the weekend? And then, a lot of people, most of them comply, and then we give them the extra two days, and then that following Monday, they go back and go ahead and close out the case if they've complied, if they haven't. If there's an issue with they couldn't get enough garbage moved away or debris, then they usually ask for some more time, just so they can go ahead and take it to the recycle on 42nd Street, or take it to the dump. So, our officers are very aware that everybody works, and so, they try to work with them. We want compliance. We could issue citations, but then we, we start issuing citations, doesn't necessarily mean we get compliance. They can go pay the fine, and they don't have to comply. So, we'd rather have compliance. It's whatever y'all want.
But there's got to be, there's got to be a stick to go with, you know? You can't do one without the other. I know, you and I have had this conversation, and I know that Liz is hiding behind Chief Gurkey back there. She and I have had this conversation on developments, because, you know, just around where I live, you go down East Ridge, and you got one developer did a, kind of like the one we're talking about tonight, which is down at East Ridge and, what am I talking about? East Ridge and, and, no, no, it's on for the, Fodry, sorry, brain fog. You know, there's one development that's got rock, grass growing out of it, the next one has pine trees, grass, looks nice. So, I've talked to her about these developers on that street side, either pavement, landscape, zero scape, do something, but we've got, that's a big problem too. So, I've asked Liz to be sure that we have to do something to make sure these developers, as they develop these properties, that they make sure they address from the fence separates their prop, the development to the curb with some kind, something they can maintain. Because I don't think that homeowner is responsible for it, I wouldn't think.
Well, the other initiative that we've started is, we have a, one officer that, what he does is, he visits retail, and he visits, he educates the manager about what is expected. He also visits the apartments, the complexes with the managers, he visits with them and says, this is what is expected, you know? And usually, he does this on a regular basis, because they just, it's a revolving door, there's different managers every six months. Same thing with the retail. I know that Dollar General is all over, that's a problem, and so, we have the direct number to their main office, and that's what we do. So, we, it's a constant educating the people that are new to this area, and constantly inviting them to follow their city ordinances, and so, that's what we're trying to do.
I would invite them with a ticket.
Well, I think there's got to be, there's got to be a stick. Dollar General, for instance, I know this goes way back, when Liz first came here, I'm picking on her today, that Dollar General there at East Ridge, that, they planted it, it died, they're supposed to plant it, last spring, they didn't, and it still looks just like it did, except they did pick their sign up off the ground. And, you know, they need to be contacted, you know, fine, they need to be fined, and if they do it a second time, the fine needs to go up. It's real simple, you know? Once, shame on you, and twice, you know?
And I think it would be a good thing, oh, I'm sorry. I think it would be a good thing to invite our presiding judge at municipal court, maybe he could also, maybe we can work with him, where maybe some citations don't have to be paid at the window, maybe they need to be set up for summons, maybe they need to appear, maybe they need to have hearings, and maybe dismissal upon condition of compliance. I'm just thinking out loud.
I have someone in the back that's raised their hand, sir, come on down, as they say in Price is Right. Who is that masked man?
Notice of violation is great, but I went through a period of time with previous council, previous city attorney, the previous manager, or the previous person in your position, to where they thought it was smart to go ahead and issue notice of violation the first of the year. That was your one-time notice. That is for long. So, that means that I already gave you a notice of violation. So, come May, when you're 6 inches tall, I'm not giving you any more notice of violation. I'm going to send a city crew out there to clean up your property. Then the next thing you get in mail, a couple of months later, is a bill from Equipment Services. That is not the way the city charter reads. And like I said, I went round and round with previous city attorney about that deal. You know, it sounds good, but, you know, what if I didn't get that first notice of violation, and then when I did get it, I was not in violation? So, I'm not even sure why you wouldn't even send it to me.
Oh, okay, so, yes.
Mr. Cleaver, I said, best to keep our records so clean. Would you introduce yourself to everyone?
Bill, please, before 17, Washington Drive.
Thank you, sir.
Unless I get kicked out or not.
Nobody will kick you out, Mr. Cleaver. So, our city ordinance does allow for that, but that's only on vacant lots. Now, what I have chosen to do is, I have chosen to do that only on drill sites. I've only done, I haven't, that's another option that we have, but right now, we're con, we have so much going on that we are doing that, we did our first round last week, I believe, for drill sites, because those are different. Those are going to be companies, those are going to be huge companies. Our city ordinance does allow for us to do that, however, I have, we have chosen not to do that yet. That's going to be, that's going to be something that we can talk about later, but right now, we're just choosing to do that on the drill sites. We haven't gotten to the vacant lots yet. And the street department, if they don't get to it because of the volume, what we're doing is, we're outsourcing that. We are outsourcing that, and I will be coming during budget time to ask for more money for that. But that's, it is in our city ordinance, it's under the health and safety, but it does allow for that.
And I read that, and all of how you interpret that also. The problem I have with that, when you say it's written, if I have an uncle, aunt, or grandma, or T.O., or whatever, that's 101 years old, they may not ever receive that mail. That may be in Kansas City, Missouri, whatever. And then, the next thing you know, a couple of years pass by, they got these $200 or $300 liens on the property, when they get ready to sell this property, get to abstract office, you got a lien on property, so you got a hiccup there. So, that's why I'm having a problem.
Tell you what I'm going to do, Mr. Cleaver, I'm going to try, here's what I'm going to ask all of Odessa to do. Number one, if you see a hole in something, right, a hole in the policy, or you think it's confusing, I want you to bring it to our attention, and we're going to take it to Dan, and we're going to try to make it crystal clear, okay? So, I need you, and y'all to come with me, all right? Now, currently, just so you know what's going on, I've got the county judge right back here, Judge Fawcett. I call Judge Mayor Lori Blong from Midland, Judge Fawcett, and Judge Terry Johnson from Midland, and we've already had one meeting to how we're going to clean our communities. We already reached out to HEB, who's agreed to meet with us, to start talking about how do we move from... who's agreed to meet with us to start talking about how do we move from plastic bags to maybe something else? We're gonna meet with Walmart, all the big-tail retailers, and try and do our part from, you know, executive level. But y'all, the public, have got to get people on board that trash is no longer acceptable. We had friends come in from Germany, and they said, this is the trashiest place in the world. And they travel around the world. They said, I've never seen this much trash. It's embarrassing.
It's been five days in Houston, and Houston is a clean city compared to Oklahoma. Let me be honest with you, I have, between me and my wife and my neighbor, fifteen up, two or three blocks in my neighborhood, we have cut vacant lots and stuff. So, I don't want you to think that I'm against cleaning up. I'm one hundred percent for it. I'm just thinking that it could be done correctly. And yes, I'll get you standing in our way.
We'd appreciate you and everyone helping us if our policies are just confusing or not clear. You got a better one? We're all ears. We want, we want our help from everyone to try to make Odessa the best it can be. And we're gonna do it, every one of us up here on the dice, and hopefully, everyone out there will help us make Odessa better, okay? Thank everything you've done. We appreciate it. Appreciate your staff, too, and everything they had to put up with. Yes, sir. Come on up here. Introduce yourself.
Good afternoon. My name is, this afternoon, my name is Pastor Miller, with St. John Baptist Church.
Yes, sir.
Now, I have a problem. I'm thankful I'm on cleanup. Now, trash and plastic bags are great, but junk cars is another thing.
We working on it. We working on them, aren't we?
So, you mean like in people's yards?
Yes, 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 yes. I have property next door that I own. Now, I was just recently told to move a boat that I have, because they said it was sitting on undeveloped property. I have no problem with the laws, except when they fickle focused on me instead of everybody else in the community. Then, I have a problem with it. I have a problem with it. Now, that junk car sitting all over the property, that's undeveloped, and nobody's moved anything but me and my boat.
I'm glad that boat's got moved.
Now, I pay taxes, amen, and, but my boat's got to sit out in front of my house, because I can't put it on my property, because they say that's undeveloped. Now, help me with that if you can.
Well, did they tell you what you need to do to solve that on that undeveloped property? Did they suggest anything? Say, hey?
They did suggest some things, but it's in, it's still only applying to me. Ain't nobody else doing anything. I live in the community. I drive all over the community and then out of the community, too. Junk cars are everywhere, not just on the south side.
Trust me, they know me by my middle name now.
Okay.
That I'm calling about them cars.
Okay, well, good, good.
And I don't know if they've ever explained to you the, because I'm a little, I don't have patience either, Reverend Miller. And they'll tell you, but...
No, say that again.
But there's a, there's a long way to get that junk car off the street.
Well, let us do this, sir.
And there's rules, so, but I get with you. Me and you, me and you get together, we'll sit and, because I'm kinda upset about the rules, too.
Amen.
Yeah, I mean, I wanna change some of that, too.
We'll talk.
Yeah, we'll talk. And I wish you had called me about the boat, or let me know about it. Because I see your boat, I was gonna ask you when we're going fishing on it, you know, that's what I was gonna ask you. But we'll get together, and we'll see what we can do to get you satisfied.
Thank you.
But we really need to, you know, that's the same, we talk about, we have an ordinance about parking cars in your yard, and we're not pushing that ordinance, but we got to find a way to get people, because me, and we can go on and on, but I don't want mobile homes. Because you know why? I like to see a house with green grass in the yard. But if we're parking cars up on that green grass, two or three of the neighbors look good, just like he was saying. Two or three of the houses look good, then you got a house that got four cars in the yard. But we got to push, we got to push our ordinance a little more. And just like he was saying to Chief Gurkey, we got to push the trucks in the city. We got to stop tapping green labels on the windows and start giving tickets to them big trucks, because I call ten times a week as a citizen, not as a councilman, because I hate seeing them trucks. But that's something we got to work on, is enforcing our ordinance that we already have in the books. But then, you'll talk and see if we can get you situated where we both happy.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate you.
Reverend Miller, appreciate your time. Thank you, sir. All right, as everyone can see, we've got work to do.
Can we remind them on the twenty-second, because some of them come in?
Talk out loud, my friend.
Well, some of you come in late, and it looks like we're gonna be able to get the MLK Street. But the mayor has asked, because this is just an open session. Now, the mayor has asked for all of us to come back, that we can, on the twenty-second, April twenty-second, at six o'clock. And we'll be able to get it in the books. But I really, really, I think everybody's overwhelmed at how many y'all stood up a while ago. Everybody, just about everybody stood up. So, come back April twenty-second at six o'clock so that we can get it and move forward, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. I do appreciate everyone that came here today for the discussion of MLK as well as trash. We understand if you need to leave, and we respect that. So, don't feel like we've got you captive audience. Y'all need to get up and leave, that's okay. We appreciate it. Thank you very much for being here.
Hey, Judge?
Judge Fawcett?
Yeah. Hey, Judge? Tell the sheriff that we'll buy him some mirrored glasses. And so, we'll buy him some mirrored glasses, and we'll get him a horse.
I got a phone call a while ago.
Gotcha.
The young lady, the senior lady wanted to buy the senior citizen his, you know? Senior center on Dixon, lady called me an hour ago, she don't know why it's not on. Somebody said we had a water issue. I think they got a water problem.
Don't be banging the gavel when you're having fun.
Because she said, you know, they like to go over there.
Are you gonna stay after, we'll be done in one more, are you gonna stay? Are you gonna stay? I want to talk to you about something. Okay, it'll be like a hundred twenty minutes. I know you're having fun, guys. We gotta finish this meeting. All right, back in December, I believe, we tabled the discussion on code of conduct. So, we're gonna need a motion, and a second, and a vote to get it back on the table.
So, move.
A motion for coming from Councilman Vasquez, a sec, from Councilman Thompson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. So, let's discuss the code of conduct ordinance norma.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Council. So, back in December, we just, we put this item on work session. Council decided to table it. And I'm just bringing it back, because according to the ordinance, the council needs to annually review this if they have any recommended changes. This is the time to recommend changes. If that's the case, we would bring it back at the next council meeting for council consideration. If council is okay with the current code of conduct ordinance, they are to fill out a form, a statement that they have read and understood the code, and I will keep this in my files, according to the ordinance.
Perfect.
Go out and sign another one?
Yes.
Yes, every year, unfortunately. Council, has everyone had a chance to read it?
Got four.
Any changes? Any discussion? If not, then let's entertain a motion to, I guess...
No action.
Oh, we just need to sign it all.
I'll get you to sign it afterwards.
I mean, no.
Yes, I have the forms here.
All right. Seeing that there's no other issues before this, council, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Motion by Councilman Stoker, second by Councilman Mitchell. We are now adjourned at three forty-four. Thank you, everyone.